Let's call this meeting to order of the Douglas Township Planning Commission. Let's start the meeting.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a new business. I visited with Rhonda. She suggests that we table that until Ron can review it a little bit more. So, we can either just cross that off. It's been noted that we have addressed it. Ron, you want to add?
What's up?
Uh, it's the civil and fractions. Do you want to do the business?
Yeah, that's actually not something to plan to do anyway. That's a board action. So, in order to have all violations of municipal solar fractions, many of the counties have regulatory ordinance that have misdemeanor penalties. The board can change the regulatory ordinance itself. So, that's okay.
So, we can strike the new business? Okay, alright. Can we strike that new business off the agenda with that adjustment? Is there a motion to accept? I'll make a motion to approve minutes and not freedom. No, we're doing the agenda right now, Pat. On the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We accept the agenda as it is.
Is there support? I'm supportive. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Now, we're gonna move in. We have to reorganize and get new officers. Ron, do you want to enlighten us on the process we're gonna go into now?
Yeah, sure. The question was raised because I guess in the past, it's been common for the supervisor to come in and temporarily chair the meeting until the new officers are elected, which is fine. It's not a problem, but at the same time, it is not required. The current officers who were elected in the past year have carryover roles until a new slate of electors is elected. So, it's perfectly acceptable for you to continue running the meeting until the new offices are elected.
Having said that, the first office that we will go for is Chairman of the Planning Commission. The floor is open for nominations for Chairman.
Nominate Jack Gibson.
I second the motion.
Any other nominations? I nominate Todd Wells.
Do we have comment? I just wanted to state the facts that we have a few new members here. Since the last time the four members weren't here, just to go over a few things. One thing that I've been on this board nineteen years, and I've watched all of you. I've listened to all of your scenarios, and I haven't seen anybody that's been violent or the need for police. But Jack thinks that he needs police presence here. And I think we can be cordial and work with each other. The next thing is, Jack has his own outbursts and his own family here. He allowed that to happen. He actually had to kick his own wife out of the room, and I think that was unacceptable. The Chairman of any board is an example of the rest of us. If the Chairman does things that are not above board, that can make the rest of you upset. So, my point is, I'm not saying that I should be the Chairman, but I'm just saying that we should rethink the idea. Allow someone else to have an option here. The second thing is, the last time, I challenged Jack last year. Jack and the current Secretary at that time decided to come up with an idea. And their idea was to question my attendance to this board of nineteen years. They came up with a fictitious idea to say that I missed over half of the meetings over nineteen years. And when I later questioned Doug, the Secretary at that time, "Where did you get those facts?" And he said he got it from the other Secretary. I questioned our Office Secretary, "Where'd you get that information?" And she said, "I did not give that to Doug. That is not the correct information." And then, so, right after that, the next meeting, Doug, the Secretary, decides to resign. So, I just thought all of you should know that. You can check me on the facts.
Any other comments?
Well, attendance is kind of still spelled out now. Okay, it's been a kind of gray area. For years, we did have Snowbird as the Chairman. And we said hello in the spring and bye in the fall. And Vice Chair, the co- and Vice Chair took care of it in between. So, that was, it's water over the dam anyway. But the attendance thing, now it's pretty much spelled out in there. Maybe it always was, but nobody could find the bylaws. So, anyway, that was really a non-issue for years. That's all I got to say about attendance.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I move we close nominations.
Is there support? Moved and seconded to close nominations. Ron, should we do a roll call on this or a secret ballot? Or how is it?
First, you just vote on closing nominations. This could be a voice vote.
Voice vote on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Then you should take, since you got more than one candidate, you should do a roll call so you know exactly.
Right, okay. I didn't know if we had to do a written ballot or voice. Vote for Jack or Todd. Paul?
Jack.
Pat?
Todd.
Todd?
Todd.
Tammy?
Jack.
Jack.
Rick?
Aye.
Jack's the Chairman. Vice Chair. Open nominations for Vice Chair. Any nominations for Vice Chair?
Nominate Tammy Switzer.
Swer.
Swer.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Moved and seconded to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. We announce ballot for Tammy. Secretary.
I nominate Becky Soules.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I motion to close nominations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to close nominations for the Secretary position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Becky's the Secretary. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is public comment. Is there a public comment? You have three minutes. You can speak once.
Laura Engel, Douglas Township. It's time to begin a new year and hopefully the birth of a new spirit of unity in the various planning commissions and township boards in our county. Many of them have been engaged in a prolonged and painful struggle to enact new or amended ordinances governing solar and/or wind energy. This conflict has many root causes which are too numerous to explore this evening. The Douglas Township Board has taken what it hopes will be a step in the right direction when it recently made three new appointments to its planning commission. At least one other township has followed suit. It is hoped that the infusion of fresh ideas on this commission will result in a wind energy ordinance that will be agreeable or at least palatable to a majority of Douglas Township's citizenry. Larry and I join others in welcoming Becky Soules, Hamel Sweress, and Paul Olson to the Planning Commission to lend their ideas and talents to those of the existing commission members. All three of the new members have tried to reassure doubters that they assume their new duties with open minds and their determination to be objective in their decision-making. I would offer a word of caution to you new members. You, by default, have become a part of the Douglas Township Twenty-First Century Range War. In declaring your neutrality and objectivity in the wind matters, you may end up dodging missiles fired at you by those on both sides of the issue. Provenance dictates that you develop extra skins, extra thick skins, to ward off unkind words directed at you. In a related manner, it would also be helpful if the various social media voices and our local print media outlets would afford the reconstituted commission a fair shake as it begins its deliberation. If each of you new members along with the existing members of the commission proceed with a vow to develop and recommend an ordinance that will protect the environment and be of long-term financial benefit to Douglas Township and the generations that come after yours, you will fulfill your obligation. Larry and I wish both you and your governing board Godspeed. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Craig from Douglas Township. As you work on the wind ordinance tonight, please be aware that the carrot that Apex reps are dangling in front of some of you that you're gonna get all kinds of money from wind turbines actually benefits them the most. You might stand to make some money, but they will make the big money. You're being used as a means for their financial gain. The more turbines that they can put in, the more money they make on subsidies from the government. In two thousand sixteen, at least one hundred and seventy-six billion in subsidies was given to companies on the American Wind Energy Association Board, such as GE and Mid-American Energy, which is a subsidiary of Berkshire Hathaway, whose CEO is Warren Buffett, who has said the only reason to build wind turbines is for the tax credits. There are initial and ongoing tax credits. The allowable tax credit for projects that began construction before December thirty-first is one and a half cents per kilowatt hour. The average three-megawatt turbine can produce about six million kilowatts per year. So, just one wind farm of seventy-five turbines of that size brings a tax credit of six-point-seven-five million dollars to the company, even though the total electrical contribution to the grid is only eight to ten percent. Wind energy companies want to get these ordinances passed and as many turbines built as possible to capitalize on the tax credits. While you may be getting a lease payment, it's a pittance compared to what Apex is making off of your land. They're setting you up to be the scapegoats. If these turbines are up and there's an incident of ice throw and someone gets hurt or property damage, the complaints are coming to you. They're setting you up for community problems, lawsuits, and division in your families. You will be dealing with the fallout. Apex will be long gone because they'll sell to a utility company as soon as possible. You have the power to stop this greed from invading our township. In the Planning Commissioner's handbook, published by the Michigan Municipal League, it states that as a planning commissioner, you are a representative of the people. It further states that an ordinance must advance a public purpose, not the interests of a private person or an arbitrary class of persons. An ordinance that grants special privileges to a single person or entity exceeds the scope of the governing body's power. An ordinance must relate to local matters, not to matters of statewide concern. And I would like to thank Todd Wells and Rick Baldwin for their ongoing adherence to these principles. I'd like to thank the newly appointed Planning Commissioner Becky Soules for her comments at the January fifth, twenty-twenty-two Douglas Township Board meeting. Her message was simple but profound. Becky Soules said that personal opinions don't matter. It's about what is best for the township. The majority of people of the township have been speaking, and we want one-hundred-and-fifty-foot height limits, forty-decibel sound limits, two-and-a-half-mile setbacks from lakes and rivers. Please listen to us. Thank you.
Linda Reynolds Stanton. Something I'm hearing in a lot of the other townships, they've sent out questionnaires since we're starting out pretty much fresh again with a new group. Might be worth spending some money that we seem to have plenty of to get the residents' opinions on what they would like. So, you're representing all of us and not just one side. Thank you.
Anyone else? Way in the back?
My name's Rochelle Lentz. I'm from Motcom Township. My family has property here in Douglas Township. And I just wanted to support what Todd said about the fact that whether you're the supervisor or Chairman of a board, you represent the board in total, and your behavior in such a way represents the entire board. With new people on your board today, I think it's important that you maybe use this time to reset that. It sounds like Douglas, you guys have been in the paper. You guys have all seen this, right? Your planning commission, your board, has been in the paper for a lot of hostile things. You don't want to be known for that. I think in Motcom Township, we have had a lot of back and forths, but we thankfully have been very respectable to our board and the people that are in our audience. And I would just hope that now that you guys have this, you can reset that and we can move forward.
Alright, we'll go ahead and move on. I want to apologize to everyone. The furnace went out overnight last night, and that's why it's so cold in here. When Rhonda got here this morning, it was, I think she said, forty-eight degrees or something like that, and it's up to fifty-five or something. They couldn't get somebody here, so that's why it's so cool in here. We're down to the minutes of December eighth. Everybody had a chance to read them over? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes and not read through all this. Is there a second?
I second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the minutes. It's printed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay, we're into old business, the consideration of the wind energy ordinance. I asked Mr. Olson to excuse himself from the front table now and set off to the side so he cannot comment on the ordinance or anything. We'll go ahead and we will, I'll turn it over to Paul, I guess, where we'll go through the, and if anybody's got any questions on the committee. Ron's here, and he can enlighten us on any questions, any legal ramifications we've got. So, Paul, go ahead.
Thank you. The draft you have is based on changes discussed at the last two meetings. So, there's a lot of red items, added items crossed out. Although there's a lot of red, you'll notice that many of those changes are just capitalizing terms that were not capitalized in prior drafts. Reason being that we wanted to go back and capitalize any term that's defined in the ordinance. So, that's why there's a lot of capitalization. I will go through the substantive changes, and if people have questions, feel free to stop.
Yeah, Tammy's got a question.
So, I have a question. As I looked at all of this, and there is what is known as a vertical access turbine.
Yes.
It was brought up by someone in the audience at the last board meeting I was on that there is noise being generated for said unit near her place that's heard further away. Whether that's fact or fiction, I do not know. But the vertical access wind turbines typically only provide three to four kilowatt hours maximum. You will see them anywhere from being mounted on pontoon boats to decks at the lake, to being mounted on kennel roofs, roof structures. And I am not seeing anything in here. Half of the products on the market exceed the decibel levels that were requiring in the other ordinance, and I'm just not seeing those height restrictions. There's been a lot of people that are concerned about line of sight. This height limit, I don't think in the rural lake estates of the low-density housing, that we really want towers of this height with the setback requirements. And again, I think we need to look at the, making sure we capture the vertical access wind turbines as well.
My understanding is that vertical aren't used for commercial wind turbines. They are used for private, and that's the examples you've used. The ordinance specifically exempts private wind turbines from these regulations. There are some height limits and other restrictions, but they're not required to get a special use approval. They're not subject to all of the other requirements here. Those are, this is written essentially to control commercial wind turbines.
So, the previous ordinance, the existing one, and the one that was approved and rescinded in November of two thousand and twenty did have specific private use regulations, height regulations, and commercials separate. And I think there's also some talks about selling power. I want to make sure that for private landowners that that excludes selling back to the power company. But I am concerned, based on comments that I've heard, that we are not addressing vertical access wind turbines. And I do not believe the height restriction is appropriate in a couple of the residential zoning districts. So, I'd like us to have conversation on that.
Is that, Paul, is that something that it shouldn't fall underneath this? We should have a separate ordinance for residential ordinances or?
Well, as I said, we address it, I think it was seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet, I believe. And they have, they have, I've done a lot of looking. They have from just like a breeze where the leaves spin. There's a lot of different things out there.
Yes, from up to eighty inches if you want three or four kilowatt hours. But again, all I can go is by the comments I heard in this room.
This is the personal side of it.
No, I'm trying to be equitable and fair to the citizens of the township and to illustrate we're listening to what's being said. And I think we would be doing a disservice to leave a loophole in the zoning ordinance where everybody could start putting up an eighty-inch vertical access wind turbine that's at seventy decibels typically, mounted to a roof, mounted to a deck, mounted to the boat. We don't have jurisdiction over vessels, as I understand it. But I see us setting ourselves up for complaints down the road because we remain silent on technology that's known today at the time we drafted this.
Well, if the planning commission wants us to go back and look at that, we can certainly do that. I'm certainly not prepared tonight to discuss private wind turbines.
So, if we were to at least entertain in our minds isolating private use and commercial use similar to the ordinance that was done in November of two thousand and twenty to make sure we're keeping our lake residential, low-density residential, those items protected and have it there. It may still be by right. I'm not saying it's not. But I'm not seeing, some of those devices are pole-mounted, structure-mounted. I'm not seeing details that would list if it's structure-mounted, it can't be greater than a third of the current elevation. I think there needs to be some provisions, even by right, that lets us know and lets the neighbors in the community know what to expect.
Ron, do you have a comment?
I do. This subject is addressed in the ordinance at page nine. It says that it has those exempt towers, which covers the non-commercial towers and are described as ones that are on the premises of a farm or a business which do not primarily involve the sale of electricity or communication services. It goes on to say they're exempt from most of the requirements, but they do have restrictions on height. The planning commission settled on eighty feet at a prior meeting. That, of course, can be revisited. The setback is three times the height. And with regard to sound, they are subject to the same noise limitations as commercial turbines. It references Table one of the ordinance. So, the same standards for participating in non-participating parcels apply to sound of that ecosystem. Now, you do make a fair point that these standards are written more with a presumption of a vertical.
Yeah, horizontal instead of vertical.
Yeah, so it refers to tip height. And of course, when you got one that circulates that way, it doesn't have a tip. So, maybe we want to tweak that because I think eighty feet would be intention regardless of the technology. But whether eighty feet is still the figure that newly reconstituted commission here agrees on, that's something I'll take a look at.
We can, when we get to page nine, we can address that, Tammy. Let's start at page two and have Paul go ahead and go through any changes that we see or we need to address.
Alright, the first major change is page four, applicability. You may recall that in the original draft, one of the earlier drafts, the idea of having a separate zoning district within, I guess, an overweight district within the Ag RE that prohibited wind turbines was discussed. And after looking at that, we suggested that instead of trying to create another zoning district and come up with boundaries that would be meandering all over the township, it might be easier to just identify exclusions where wind turbines could not be located. And that's what paragraph C applicability is all about. So, starts out by saying the regulations apply within the Ag RE district except for areas specifically excluded. And paragraph C two says, no wind turbine, et cetera, shall be located within the following areas. A, within six hundred feet of a state-designated wetland, or four times the height of the wets, whichever is greater. I would suggest after, and I can give you a drawing that I prepared because I wanted to see what those regulations would actually allow on the ground when we started applying those distances. Because one of the concerns all along has been we want to control wind turbines, but from the township perspective, we don't want to be exclusionary. We can't be exclusionary based on the law. So, I wanted to make sure that, given these setback distances, there would still be areas where the wet systems could be located.
So, where did you give these distances?
So, he'll just pass those down. So, the map that I've given you, admittedly, this is an approximation. It's not an engineered drawing, but it does illustrate in the light yellow tang areas that there would be several areas within the township where wets could conceivably be permitted within the setback limits that we've identified in paragraph C. However, one of the changes that was made at the last meeting was to limit the height of, the tip height of the towers to a hundred and fifty feet. In all my research, I have yet to find any commercial wind turbine at a hundred and fifty feet. Right now, the typical is about four hundred. There are many communities that are, where they're going up to five hundred and even six hundred feet. So, as I looked at that, I am recommending that we increase the height because, again, it's not reasonable. It's not even defensible if we limit it to a hundred and fifty feet.
Yes, people are involved because Ron said it doesn't matter what you put in there because work will change it once and for all. That's worth the hundred and fifty.
No, I understand.
Well, the new people may not know. That's how we got there.
Okay. But I think if the planning commission is going to develop an ordinance and present it to the township board with a recommendation, then my suggestion would be you try to make it as reasonable as you're comfortable with and give them something to work with rather than present recommendations that you know they're not going to accept. Having said that, four times the not going to accept. Um, having said that, uh, four times the, the, uh, tip height of a four-hundred-foot tower would be six hundred, sixteen hundred feet. If you look at that map, it probably eliminates almost all of those areas except for a couple of the larger ones. Um, I don't believe four times tip height is a reasonable requirement. In fact, if you look at the, um, list of ordinances that were researched, uh, I think by the public, uh, the, the typical standard is, uh, one and a quarter to one and a half, uh, times the height. So, um, you know, a, a four-hundred-foot tall, uh, tip height would be one and a half times at, at a six-hundred-foot setback. So my suggestion for both A and B is to simply say six hundred feet, uh, setback from those areas. The other thing I think we need to keep in mind, this is a, a pretty lengthy, detailed ordinance, and we have requirements for environmental impact statement. We have noise limits. We have a number of other safeguards. So the setback is, is a minimum starting point, but even if it's setback, whatever distance you choose, they still have to meet a lot of other requirements that may, uh, make it, uh, infeasible at, at six hundred feet.
Having said that, Ron, you got, uh, we got six hundred foot from designated wetland. What's the federal law? Isn't the federal, will the federal law supersede?
Well, the federal law, if it was, if it was more restrictive, would supersede.
But if, if it's less?
If it's less than this.
This, will, this will be enforced by the federal. Okay.
So how do we enforce it when we're not the permitting authority? So that's why I was asking what these distances are. So Michigan is one of four states that I know of in the country that has jurisdiction over all waterways, wetlands, watersheds, the whole list is there. So my concern is that we're not the permitting authority. They are going to submit to the state. The state is king.
That means you have to go down a rabbit hole that doesn't exist. You are the permitting authority. The township has the sole responsibility for approving setback issues to the current tower project. What do you expect to be?
Even with the wetlands?
Sure.
Okay. And it is enforceable?
Yes. And I, let, let me say, as a general matter, setbacks from wetlands are enforceable. When you ask a question about ordinance in its totality, whether it's in an open situation where a project is feasible, the setback from wetland is one thing that can create problems here. Now, the map, all is put together and suggests that six hundred feet will leave areas available to development, and so it does not suggest that it's problem.
And does this map cap, capture?